So unique is that we have a resident company of artists. And this is a very important theater making tradition that is becoming increasingly rare in our industry. The theater's work focuses on building empathy, forming connections between audiences and artists, creating space for marginalized voices and finding commonalities in the lived human experiences of our community. I am a true testament to that as I attended Everyman Theater as a student at Baltimore School for the Arts and now full circle already in programming as Associate Artistic Director.
I'd like to take a second just to talk a little bit about equity and solidarity. You know, at Everyman, we've created a Committee on Anti-Racism Equity and Solidarity. We're responding vigorously to the We See You White American Theater document. We've crafted a statement of solidarity to continue to guide our work. Everyman Theater is committed to an equitable and diverse and inclusive atmosphere at every level of the organization, staff, board, audience, and artists. We seek to include and reflect and give agency to the varied experiences of our community, being mindful of the historically marginalized BIPOC, LGBTQ+, and ADA communities. We aspire to become an artistic home that is multicultural in representation and centered on anti-racist and anti-oppression practices. We've enabled racist and systemic traumas in our home. We've contributed to and benefited from systems of oppression. While we've worked to share power with underrepresented populations, provide space for marginalized voices, and standardize more equitable practices, we know we have more work to do. We commit to deprogramming our individual biases and dismantling both internally and externally inherited systems of oppression. Oppression. Notable commitments, we've eliminated our rehearsal process that includes actors and staff working 10 out of 12-hour days during tech when we're putting the final pieces onto our productions. We've added BIPOC benchmarks for writers, production staff, and the creative team, ongoing anti-racism training, addition of a CARES chair, that's our Committee on Anti-Racism and Equity. We've created that chair as a member of the Board's Executive Committee. And we've updated a code of conduct that includes modernized definitions and examples of harassment and abuse, provides tools for conflict resolution and bystander intervention.
So Vinnie really talks a little bit about what we're looking forward to in our shifts as we move forward and continue to improve. But there's been a lot of continued commitments that we'd like to highlight in this moment. One is that people is one of the core values of Everyman Theater. And we've sought to prioritize keeping our employees and our artists safe and cared for. For that reason, we are super proud that we have not had to fire or furlough, furlough, excuse me, any of our permanent full or part-time staff, putting us just among 10% of the league of regional theaters in the country who can say that. We've accomplished this due to our shift in digital programming and retraining our staff to fulfill different roles during this pandemic. I mentioned before that my major connection to Everyman way back in the day was our matinee program that is still going on strong. We have transitioned our educational programming online in order to sustain and expand its commitment to students in the Baltimore region, including a digital high school matinee program, which provides city high school students with high-quality theater education for free, and launching a new virtual field trip program to engage students and schools in surrounding countries, counties, excuse me. Everyman is projected to serve 2,500 students for the 21-year. Students participating in the high school matinee program are each receiving 30 hours of educational content, really reinforcing our focus on depth of educational experiences. Something else that we are proud of and that we are really looking forward to cultivate, especially with everyone that's on this call today, is our civic and economic partnerships with the city. In terms of civic engagement, Everyman's great actors are expert storytellers. Theater evokes empathy, and we would like to continue to partner with agencies and departments to help get your messages out. We can be effective communicators, trainers, facilitators. We care about the community, and we would love to know about more opportunities where we can make a difference with you. One example of that is The House That Holds Us. That was our successful partnership with the Baltimore Office of Equity and Civil Rights. It drew an estimated initial audience of 1,000 viewers, and this was at the end of the summer, around August. The content has been adapted for other programs like our high school matinee program. We also learned of some tremendous impact that that actual program was able to change residents in Baltimore's lives. We would love to use this as a model for future partnerships with the city.
We're also very interested in economic development. You know, as vaccines take hold and people come out of hibernation, downtown areas will need the arts to attract patron life. Theatergoers dine, park, and purchase goods and services around their theater-going experiences. Everyman can play a role in the economic recovery and revival of downtown Baltimore. With the city's help, we can shine a light on Everyman when it reopens, and it'll benefit many businesses and the citizens throughout the region. Before closing with the pandemic, Everyman was producing over 250 performances each season, with the theater offering public programming 200 days of the year that draws a total audience of about 48,000 people. It's important attractions to draw regular and constant foot traffic to the promo district. I just want to take a second to thank you all for your time today. I know how busy you are. It means the world to us. Thank you.
Well, we're not too busy to hear from cultural institutions like you. You are the heartbeat of our city. You're exactly right when we talk about bringing folks back into downtown and filling up our streets. It will be institutions like yours will be at the forefront of it. Many people do not know this fact about me, but Paige, I would have been a student at Baltimore School for the Arts as well if you guys had a football team. I was in twigs throughout my middle school years and got accepted into the School for the Arts. But I decided to go to Poly to play football. But, you know, so I just wanted to let you know how much we appreciate you. We know what you mean to the city as it relates to the growth of our city and sustainability of our city, and thank you so much for coming out today and addressing the city as well as the council.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Vincent. Thank you, Paige. Please know that you have friends here on the Baltimore City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to Clerk, please call the role of members.
President Mosby. Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
We will proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the February 22nd, 2021 proceedings are on the councilmember's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found on page two of your agenda. We will now move the bills being introduced for first reading.
City Council Bill 21-0047R Charter Amendment Dante Barksdale Career Technology Apprenticeship Fund for the purpose of establishing a continuing non-lapsing Dante Barksdale Career Technology Education Fund to be used exclusively to supplement pre-apprenticeship programs and other workforce development programs, requiring a minimum monthly appropriation to this fund, authorizing the mayor and city council by ordinance to provide for the oversight, governance, and administration of this fund, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors are President Mosby, Councilmember Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Ramos, Schleifer, Torrance.
I think we have Councilman Stokes who would like to be added on as a sponsor, Councilman Cohen would like to be added on as a sponsor, Councilwoman McCray would like to be added on, Councilman Glover would like to be added on, Councilwoman Ramos would like to be added on. Is there any other hands? Councilman Dorsey would like to be added on. Councilwoman Felicia Porter would like to be added on. I believe I have everyone. Is that right? Councilman, Chairman Costello would like to be added on. I believe I have everyone. Okay. You know, we constantly talk about the importance of local hiring. We talk about imagining a council that puts itself in the position to do more, particularly as it relates to our young folks. We're seeing this right now in the midst of COVID. Many of our kids are working at Amazon or working at McDonald's, just really trying to unfortunately enter the work market much sooner than we would like. It's going to be a challenge for us to get those kids back into our school system. But we understand and know that that need is there. What this is attempting to do is developing an apprenticeship fund to help bolster the opportunities of CTEs in our school system, ensuring that we understand and know the jobs that are coming out of the pipeline in the next five, 10, 15 years, and rightfully preparing our young folks to have access to those jobs. This is a program that's modeled off of something that's currently done in the state. Basically, companies that are doing business for the city, but would be required to put money into this fund. And that fund will be utilized again to provide real opportunities to our young folks as relates to CTE initiatives in our city. We also constantly talk about the importance of getting to our kids earlier, particularly in middle school, identifying children who would not traditionally go down certain career tracks, knowing that some of them have the innate abilities, those characteristics, trying to identify them much sooner to get them in these pipelines of success. So this is one step, one huge step in the right direction. This is ensuring that on the other, on the back end of that, from a succession perspective of city government, be it in DGS or DOT or DPW, that we're able to try to track and get some of our kids and some of our citizens directly engaged in the business of the city. So this is again a local job hiring program. This is an initiative to help provide real opportunities to our young folks. We knew through empirical data that children that are in CTE programs, career readiness programs are more likely to graduate, are more likely to go on to second, two-year or four-year colleges, or more likely to enter the job workforce with a productive asset. So that's all that this is here to do. I appreciate all of the co-sponsors. Look forward to a very spirited debate. And again, this is your Baltimore City Council, ensuring that we're doing more for our young folks. This has been assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0048 Construction Projects Project Labor Agreements for the purpose of requiring project labor agreements for certain construction projects in Baltimore City, providing for the content of those agreements, permitting the Director of Finance to waive the project labor agreement requirement under certain circumstances, allowing for rules and regulations and defining certain terms. Sponsor, Councilman Bull.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Bullock, would you like to speak on this bill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As we discussed earlier, this is essentially the same bill that was passed by the council last year. Again, project labor agreements or PLAs, they're essentially collective bargaining agreements between the building trade unions and the contractors. Quite frankly, they govern the terms and conditions of employment for both union and non-union workers on construction projects. We believe this can also be leveraged to increase the number of Baltimore city residents working on city-funded construction projects. We do know there are a number of cities who use PLAs, project labor agreements for their city-funded construction projects. Some of those cities include Washington DC, New York City, Chicago, Los Angeles, and Philadelphia. Again, we believe there could be some positive economic impacts for our city residents, including higher wages, less wage theft because of bargaining power, then also access to benefits like health insurance and retirement. So again, I think this would be monumental stuff for our city. So I look forward to having committee hearings to discuss the details, as well as any potential amendments that may strengthen requirements and address concerns that any of our colleagues may have. So again, thank you for your time. I look forward to your support.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. This has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill 21-0049 Prohibited Disposals, Fines, and Reporting the Neighbors Against Predatory Dumping Act for the purpose of modifying the applicable environmental control citation and simple citation fines for violating Title VII, Subtitle VI of the Baltimore City Health Code and requiring that the Health Commissioner submit an annual report detailing certain information regarding the city's prohibited disposal laws. Sponsors: Councilmember Cohen, Burnett, Dorsey, Middleton, Bullock, Ramos, and Torrance.
One of the core responsibilities of our government is to ensure that quality of life is sustained, maintained, or at least increased. And I know that the councilmember Cohen, gentleman from the 1st District, has been working hard to identify ways of going after and looking at illegal dumping, and I believe that this is one step in the right direction. So Councilman Cohen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the past few months, councilmembers Porter, Torrance, Ramos, and I have been working as a coalition to come up with solutions to clean up our city. Yesterday, at a community cleanup in Curtis Bay, we announced several legislative solutions to improve the overall cleanliness of Baltimore. Thank you to your staff, Clerk Nikki and Mr. Derek, and the many volunteers that joined us. The Neighbors Against Predatory Dumping Act will double fines from $500 to $1,000 for illegal dumping. It is one important piece of that puzzle. Residents that live in redlined, disinvested neighborhoods are sick and tired of being treated like garbage. Let's be clear, illegal dumping harms all of Baltimore, but it does not impact our communities equally. We see disproportionate dumping in our disinvested neighborhoods. In my district, people usually don't dump in Harbor East or Fell's Point or along the waterfront. They dump in areas that they think they can get away with it, like Baltimore Highlands, Graceland Park, Greettown, and O'Donnell Heights. And despite the valiant effort of neighbors to keep our communities clean, it's a battle that we are struggling to win. Baltimoreans deserve to live in a city that is clean and beautiful. Government must step in. It's important to note that other similar cities are more aggressive in finding people and companies for this predatory practice. The state of New Jersey charges $2,500 for a first-time fine. New York City, $4,000 to $18,000, and right up the road, Washington DC charges $5,000. I'm proud to introduce this legislation along with my colleagues, Councilmember Porter, Torrance, and Ramos. We're also introducing bills to make it easier for small haulers and regular Baltimoreans to dispose of trash the right way. This is an all-in effort, and we need all of our residents to dig in with us. Let's clean up our communities. I thank you for your support.
No, thank you for your leadership on this, Councilman Cohen. This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Just jumping back before we get into resolutions, 21-0047 was the bill title for, the bill number for Charter Amendment Dante Barksdale Career Technology Apprenticeship Fund. That's 21-0047, and it has been assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. Now jumping over to resolutions to be introduced, Clerk, if you could, please read the resolutions.
Resolution 21-0026R Investigative Hearing COVID-19 Small Business Reopenings for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore Development Corporation to brief the city council on their efforts to support small businesses and economic development in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Sponsors are Councilmember Porter, Conway, Bullock, McCray, Ramos, and Torrance.
Councilwoman Porter, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill? Real quick, before you take the floor, Councilwoman Porter, I think I saw the hand of Councilman Chairman Stokes, Vice President Green Middleton, Councilmember Cohen, Councilmember Glover. Councilmember Porter, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is an initiative that I've been working with Councilman Conway of the 4th District to address the COVID-19 recovery here in Baltimore City. The Baltimore Development Corporation gave away 1,000 small business assistant grants, totaling $13 million to small businesses in the city of Baltimore. We know from their initial findings that 63% of them went to Black Indigenous persons of color. 57% went to women-owned businesses, and 66% of those businesses are in Baltimore City. This is an opportunity for the Baltimore Development Corporation to address the city council to share on their further findings from their grant program, and also for the council to suggest, to suggest other opportunities for small business and economic recovery in the city of Baltimore. This is something that I care very deeply about, given the nature of small businesses here in Baltimore City during COVID-19. Many of them have shut down. Many people have lost jobs, have lost homes related to the closing of those small businesses. And so this is an opportunity for us to really develop and execute a plan at the city level for small businesses. Not just our small businesses as defined by the Maryland General Assembly, but we are talking about real small businesses in the city that had greater impact for our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you to the gentleman from the 10th District for clarifying that point. We understand and know that she stated that our small businesses have been hit hard and how we've seen some positive signs out of some programs and initiatives. It's really important that we stay vigilant. So thank you again, Councilwoman Porter, for bringing this to our attention. Next up, we're going to go into 21-0027R.
Resolution 21-
Madam Clerk, I'm so sorry. That resolution, 21-0026R, has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Now we can move on to 27.
Resolution 21-0027R Informational Hearing Illegal Dumping for the purpose of inviting the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works and the Acting Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, as well as representatives from the Law Department, the Health Department, and the Baltimore Police Department to explain how their agencies assist in solving the problem of illegal dumping in the city. Sponsors are Councilmember Torrance, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, McCray, and Ramos.
I see Chairman Stokes with his hand raised as a co-sponsor. I see Councilwoman Richard Porter, Councilman Cohen as sponsors as well. The gentleman from the 7th District, Councilman Torrance, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank my colleagues for signing on as co-sponsors, as well as acknowledging the public that this is the hard work of having discussions with the agencies to discuss where their current processes are, as well as what their current challenges are, and giving them the charge to provide solutions to the council in ways that we can support the legislative. So this is a collective action, collective effort between us and the agencies. I just want to recognize that, and thank you all for your side.
No, thank you, Councilman. Again, this is work that Councilman Torrance, as well as Porter and Cohen have been working on for a couple of months, and it's the culmination of it. I know that this is the first step of many steps. So thank you all for taking this issue on. We're going to move on to, that's been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. We're going to move on to 21-0028.
Resolution 21-0028R Informational Hearing Baltimore's Plan for Our Neighbors Experiencing Homelessness and Residing in Hotels During the Pandemic for the purpose of inviting the Acting Director of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the City Administrator, the Acting Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the advocacy group Housing Our Neighbors and Homeless Persons Representation Project to brief and advise the city council as to the overall outcomes for neighbors experiencing homelessness who were able to reside in hotels, what is next for them, assistance for those experiencing homelessness in encampments during the crisis, and the availability of programs to access housing. Sponsors are Councilmember Ramos, Middleton, Bullock, Schleifer, and Torrance.
I see Chairman Stokes would like to go on as a co-sponsor. Any other additional co-sponsors? I see Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Porter. Okay, the floor is yours, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President and councilmembers. As we all know, the crisis of people that people are going through who are experiencing homelessness obviously is a big deal, certainly before the pandemic and now definitely during the pandemic. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services has taken leadership to house many of them in our hotel, in some of the hotels. And, but we still have, you know, encampments, and we're still dealing with this issue. So this hearing will be to bring everyone together to understand what the next steps are in the plans, particularly if federal funding to help with housing these, our neighbors experiencing homelessness. You know, may expire, it's going to expire at some point, given the end of the crisis, so the pandemic, so what will be next for them? And that's what this hearing is about, and I'm really much looking forward to it and looking forward to working with everyone on the next step for the solutions for this crisis, particularly since it may be getting worse sooner than later if we're not able to stop some of these. So thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, councilmembers, and I look forward to the hearing. Thanks.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. And next up, we'll go to 21-0029R.
Resolution 21-0029R Approval for the Exchange of a Class 87 License to a Class A7 License for 1801 East North Avenue for the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code Section 129021 Subsection D1 to allow the license holder a valid Class 87 Beer Wine and Liquor License issued for use at 1801 East North Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, 21213, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class 87 Beer Wine and Liquor License for a Class A7 Beer Wine and Liquor License. Sponsor, Councilmember Stokes.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Moving on to 21-0030R.
Resolution 21-0030R Approval for the Exchange of a Class 87 License to a Class A7 License 1232 North Caroline Street for the purpose of providing required approval to allow the license holder a valid Class 87 Beer Wine and Liquor License issued for use at 1232 North Caroline Street, Baltimore, 21213, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class 87 Beer Wine and Liquor License for a Class A7 Beer Wine and Liquor License. Sponsor, Councilmember Stokes.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee on to 21-0031R.
Resolution 21-0031R Approval for the Exchange of a Class 87 License to a Class A7 License 1041 Green Mount Avenue for the purpose of providing the required approval under the Maryland Annotated Code Alcoholic Beverages article to allow the license holder holding a valid Class 87 Beer Wine and Liquor License issued for use at 1041 Green Mount Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, 21202, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class 87 Beer Wine and Liquor License for a Class A7 Beer Wine and Liquor License. Sponsor, Councilmember Stokes.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee on to 21-0032R.
Resolution 21-0032R Informational Hearing Studying the Feasibility of a Small Hauler Incentive Program for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Finance, Department of Public Works, and the Department of Health to discuss the feasibility of enacting a small hauler incentive program to better offset illegal dumping and litter in our communities. Sponsors are Councilmember Porter, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, McCray, Ramos, and Torrance.
I see the hand of Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor. Councilwoman Porter, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is an, this is a practical means to address illegal dumping here in Baltimore City. Bulk trash pickup was an issue before the pandemic. It was exacerbated during the pandemic, and we're now seeing the effects as we are coming, as we are coming to post-pandemic for COVID-19. We know that 10,000 tons of waste are illegally dumped in our city every year, and so this is an opportunity to incentivize our small haulers that are already working in this space to work in collaboration with the Department of Public Works to pick up, to pick up these illegally dumped bulk items in our neighborhood alleyways, our neighborhoods, our parks. And so this, this proposed legislation would, one, decrease or and/or eliminate fines related to proper disposal. So we want to create, we want to eliminate as much barrier as possible for small haulers to deliver waste properly to their transfer facility. So eliminating or reducing the tipping fees related to it is something that I'm looking forward to instituting. Secondly, offering an incentive program for small haulers based on their tonnage of waste that they provide to these transfer facilities. So not only are we picking up the trash and creating a nimble way for DPW to operate, we are providing an incentive model for our small haulers so that they are able to gain, to have gainful employment, gainful legal employment as well. And so we know that most- And so, we know that most of our small haulers in Baltimore City, some of them are returning citizens, some of them cannot get jobs traditional, the traditional way. And so, this provides an opportunity for them to gain, to have gainful employment legally. I look forward to talking about this a lot more. This was a pilot program initially started under former Mayor Young, and I'm looking to expand it with the help of my colleagues. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilwoman. Again, I would like to publicly just thank you for your leadership in this issue. Quality of life is a major concern for many folks throughout our districts in our city and, you know, innovative solutions like this and just trying to figure out what works and scaling them up is definitely types of solutions that we want to kind of go after. So, really know that you've been at the forefront of this since taking office and appreciate all the work that you've done to date and look forward to quality hearing. This resolution has been assigned to the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. On to 21-0033R.
Resolution 21-0033R, investigative hearing women in public safety leveling the playing field for the purpose of requesting that the Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department, and the Director of the Department of Human Resources come before the Baltimore City Council to provide information about their agency's strategy to recruit, retain, mentor, and promote more women. Sponsor, Councilmember McCray, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, and Ramos.
I see the hands raised of Councilmen Torrance, Councilwoman Porter, Chairman Stokes, Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Baltimore City has not been immune to nationwide trends regarding the lack of women in public safety. Less than 16% of our police departments' sworn officers are women, and less than 14% of our fire departments' sworn personnel are women. These trends are not due to a lack of desire by women to perform in these public safety careers, but due to longstanding barriers that stand in their way. These disproportionate barriers are within recruitment, retention, mentorship, and the promotion of experienced women. Historically, both of our Baltimore City Police and Fire Departments have dealt with equity issues in their hiring and promotional practices as it pertains to women. It was not until 1978, when the first woman was promoted through the ranks and held the command-level position of Major. It was not until 2020, again, 2020, that the Baltimore City Fire Department promoted the first woman to rise through the ranks to, excuse me, through the ranks to the command level of Deputy Chief. During the last term, the Labor Committee was able to examine the recruitment and hiring practices of the Baltimore Police Department and the recruitment, hiring, and promotional practices of the Baltimore City Fire Department. Through those hearings, it was visible to see that while women have made some progress, there is still a large disparity gap in the representation of women in both agencies, which increases the higher they try to promote. As we take this month to recognize women and their contributions, let us continue to work to ensure that women have the opportunity to be present in industries that they have historically been underrepresented in. 2021 is the year to open the doors for women to thrive in public safety positions in Baltimore City. And I look forward to a thoughtful dialogue on this topic. I want to thank all of my colleagues for your support, and thank you, Mr. President, and happy International Women's Day.
No, thank you, Chairwoman. I believe, did I see another hand? Oh, no, you guys were just pumping your fists. All right, there we go. The women were pumping their fists. No, thank you again for bringing this attention to us. We understand and know that inequities exist all throughout government, as well as private industry. It's really hard to push for private industry to do something that we're not doing publicly as it relates to our public sector. So, again, Council, Chairwoman McCray, I thank you for your leadership on this effort. This resolution has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. On to 21-0034R.
Resolution 21-0034R, informational hearing Baltimore City broadband expansion for the purpose of inviting the Baltimore City Department of Finance, the Comptroller, Baltimore City Information Technology, the Law Department, the Department of Transportation, and other relevant parties to discuss and present multiple options for broadband and high-speed data access in the city of Baltimore, discussing the city's powers or limitations regarding broadband expansion with regard to state law, as well as city contracts and franchises already in place, and the possibility of creating a municipal broadband utility to assist citizens in their accessibility to broadband, discussing possible policy or legislative reforms, and any other relevant information of interest to the Baltimore City Council in order to bring Baltimore City's broadband infrastructure and technology into the 21st century. Sponsors are Councilmember Glover, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, McCray, Ramos, and Torrance.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleagues for jumping on and sponsoring this bill. Like, as mentioned early on, it's the 21st century, you know, and Baltimore is time for us to move forward. It's time for us to push this bill forward in the future because of the fact that one reason this will invite more people to come back to Baltimore far as living back here in the city of Baltimore, and it also create benefits for our business community. As I mentioned early on during the launch of this bill, was written to address disparities surrounding access to broadband in Baltimore City. We all know that one company has taken over the monopoly on broadband here in the city and allows them to continue to raise the prices on people. And we're forced to basically pay those prices because of the fact that we have no one else with them. So, I look forward to moving, you know, this resolution forward, and I hope that my colleagues will continue to support as we move forward in the 21st century. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilmember Glover. This resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Moving on to Consent Calendar, you can find the Consent Calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved, Councilmember.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the Consent Calendar, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the calendar is approved. And now, we'll move on to committee reports. We're going to first get to the bills on second reader. I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Hearing and seeing no objections, we will be on to short titles for the remainder of the meeting. There it goes. We're on to short titles for the remainder of the meeting. The first up is City Council Bill 21-0005.
City Council Bill 21-0005, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, Variance 810 Argon Drive.
I would like to recognize the Chairwoman of the Committee, Vice President Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard, the committee heard several zoning bills on March 2nd, and this particular bill, 21-005, was sponsored by Councilman Conway of the 4th District. The committee heard the bill on March 2nd, 2021. Their finding of the facts for Council, in Councilmembers packets, I move the finding of the facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor of approving the finding of the facts, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of the facts are approved. Chairwoman Green Middleton.
And I move the bill favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Since it's been moved and properly second, all those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The motion is approved. The bill moves on to third reader. On to City Council Bill 21-006.
City Council Bill 21-0006, rezoning for 07 Vinnie Hoss Road.
Chairwoman Middleton, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The council also heard Bill Number 21-006 on March 22nd, on March 2nd, I'm sorry, 2021. The sponsor again was Councilman Conway of the 4th District. The committee heard the bill, as I said, on March 2nd. There are finding of the facts on Councilmembers packets. I move the finding of the facts.
Is there? Is that a second from you?
Yes.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor of approving the finding of the facts, please say aye.
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 Not all at once. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of the facts are approved. Back to you, Chairwoman Middleton.
And I move this bill favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this motion is approved. The bill moves to third reader. Now, on to City Council Bill 21-0010.
City Council Bill 21-0010, rezoning 2087 Druid Park Drive.
The body would like to recognize Chairwoman Middleton again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill Number 20-0010 was heard on March 2nd, 2021. The sponsor was Councilman Torrance of the 7th District. Their finding of the facts on, in Councilmembers packets, I move the finding of the facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor of approving the finding of the facts, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say. The ayes have it, the finding of the facts are approved. Chairwoman Middleton, the floor is yours.
And I move this bill favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of moving this bill forward, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this motion is approved. This bill moves on to third reader. Next up, we have City Council Bill 21-0011.
City Council Bill 21-0011, rezoning 2426 Pennsylvania Avenue.
I would like to recognize Chairwoman Green Middleton again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill Number 21-0011 was also heard on March 2nd, 2021. The sponsor of the bill again was Councilman Torrance of the 7th District. Their finding of the facts on Councilmembers, in Councilmembers packets, I move the finding of the facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the finding of the facts, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of the facts are approved.
And I move, I move this bill favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
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 We're halfway through, go, folks. All those opposed, please say nay. Okay, the ayes have it, the motion is approved. The bill moves on to third reader. City Council Bill 21-0013.
City Council Bill 21-0013, rezoning 4015 Foster Avenue, 4000 Hudson Street, and 801 South Haven Street.
Chairwoman Green Middleton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill Number 21-0013 was heard by the committee on March 2nd, 2021. The sponsor of the bill was Councilman Cohen of the 1st District. Their finding of the facts in Councilmembers packets, I move the finding of the facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those approve, all those in favor of approving the finding of the facts, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of the facts are approved. Chairwoman Middleton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I, I move this bill favorable.
Second.
Bill's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of moving this bill forward, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill is approved, and we'll move on to third reader. Next up will be City Council Bill 21-0015.
City Council Bill 21-0015, zoning conditional use parking lots, 115 and 118 Mount Claire Street.
Vice President, what's in the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill Number 21-0015 was also heard by the committee on March 2nd, 2021. The sponsor of the bill was Councilman Bullock of the 9th District. Their finding of facts in Councilmembers packets, I move the finding of the facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the finding of the facts, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Finding of facts are approved. Chairwoman Middleton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. There, there is an amendment for this bill. The proposed parking lots must be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee, and the parking lots must comply with the requirements of the Landscape Manual. I move the amendment.
So, Chairwoman, just for the record, is that two separate amendments or one? It's a package of amendments?
It's some finding of the facts, and then this is just one amendment. One, one amendment together.
All right, so we have a package of committee amendments. Did I, was it properly second to move the amendments? I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Those, those amendments are approved. Chairwoman Middleton, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the bill with the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Please let the record reflect that, I believe, one nay with Councilman Ryan Dorsey. This motion is approved. The bill moves on to third reader. And now, we're going to move to Health, Environment, and Technology. Next bill up is City Council Bill 21-0002R.
City Council Bill 21-0002R, investigative hearing in letting the.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution on February the 24th. I move the resolution favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of adopting a resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. This resolution is adopted. On to City Council Bill 21-0010R.
City Council Bill 21-0010R, informational hearing, getting on the same page, clarifying 311 Services' approach to resolving requests.
At this point, I would like to recognize the Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution on March 3rd. I move the resolution favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of adopting a resolution, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The resolution is adopted. We'll move on to Public Safety and Government Operations. First bill up, the City Council Bill 21-0024.
City Council Bill 21-0024, minority and women's business utilization emergencies.
At this point, I would like to acknowledge the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on March 3rd, 2021. Its sponsor was Councilmember Chris Burnett. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments, and the amendments were sent to council members electronically. I move the committee amendments.
Is there a second for the committee amendments? Chairman Conway, just for the record, could you just briefly talk about me and the important amendments? If you were technical, make sure you can just let us know.
So the, there was one amendment, and that was to extend the report period from thirty days to forty five days.
Well, thank you for that. So I think we heard it properly moved for committee amendments. Did I hear a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor of adopting the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. The amendments are approved. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
I guess.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the bills, this bill as amended, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill is approved. Moves on to third reader. And next up is Rules and Oversight EA twenty one dash zero zero two six.
EA twenty one dash zero zero two six James L. Shea, city solicitor.
Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this nomination on March fourth, twenty twenty one. Mr. Shea passed through the committee unanimously, as well as everybody who testified, testified and supported Mr. Shea. And so I would like to move the nomination favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. At this point, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the nomination, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the nomination is approved. Moving on to Ways and Means, City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero three two.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero three two Salary Director of Public Works.
Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. On March fifth, the Ways and Means Committee voted unanimously to approve an increase in the salary for the Director of Public Works. This legislation will increase the salary for the Director of DPW from a hundred and eighty eight thousand to two hundred and forty five thousand dollars annually. An increase to this magnitude is not something the committee takes lightly. We wanted to ensure we had adequate time to fully understand the justification, complete our due diligence, make sure that we get this right. The committee held an initial hearing on February sixteenth, made a number of documentation requests, which the administration promptly responded to. We then carefully analyzed the information provided before we convened a march fifth. Baltimore City's DPW manages both solid waste operations and water processing and delivery across five other jurisdictions. More responsibility than most comparable large city agencies across the U.S. Specifically, these two functions are usually split between two separate agencies in most other cities in the U.S. We know the full breadth of challenges that DPW faces related to the integrity of water billing, compliance with the EPA consent decree for our sewer system, implementation of water affordability measures, staffing challenges within the solid waste division, expansion of our landfill at Quarantine Road, and efforts to move towards zero waste. With all that in mind, it is clear this action is justified if we truly expect to bring in top level talent to help transform DPW to the challenges of our time. And Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving the bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. This motion is approved. The bill moves on to third reader. I would like to recognize Councilman, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the appropriate rules to move the bill from second to third reader on the same evening.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Having been properly moved and second, the clerk will now follow.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter.
Mr. President.
Chris.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Porter.
Yes, can I explain my, can I explain my vote really quickly?
One hundred percent.
Thank you. So given, given the nature of the DPW administrator, I, I hope that moving forward, we will, we have a DPW administrator that not only focuses on waste management, but prevention efforts as well and education efforts. And so I voted favorably for the salary increase with the hopes that this next administrator will not only focus on the enforcement of our waste management, but also expanding and reimagining how we envision waste management here in Baltimore City. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, Councilwoman Porter, thank you for your explanation. To the clerk, please start off back with Costello.
Councilmember Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Yes, may I extend my vote?
Yes, Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Similar to my colleague, you know, I, I actually really struggled with this. I really struggled with it because there are so many needs in our city that are going to need a lot of attention. And I am expecting by approving this salary increase, I'm expecting, and we all have very high expectations for what this administrator is going to have to do. We have to get the water billing right. We have to make sure that when we're doing the water billing, that those that are get, that should be getting water bills are getting them, and those that can't afford them, the affordability plans are put in place. We absolutely need to address getting closer to zero waste. These are the expectations that we have. And with this salary increase, it is a big deal. So I do look forward to working with the mayor and the administration on all of these. But this, what we just talked about has to get done under this new administrator. Thank you.
No, thank you for that explanation. You know, just like Councilman Ramos just stated, we understand and know the conditions of our water system. We also understand and know what was promised to folks close to decade ago, has not been delivered to date. I think this council, particularly the committee, took this very serious. They questioned the administration and trying to find comparative type of salaries and understanding the logic of coming up with this particular salary and where we are. I think that the council, the chairman did an amazing job in working with the administration in coming up with the, all the answers that was sufficient for the committee. This is how government is supposed to work, in a very transparent manner, in a right manner. And, you know, we understand and know our partner in progress is the mayor. He has communicated that this is exactly what he needs to kind of move the city forward, particularly for a task that has been a hindrance of our city and has negatively affected many of our residents for far too long. And we look forward to continuing to be a strong partner with him and his administration. The ayes have it, the bill moves on to third reader today. As we know that third reader requiring implication of council, City Council Rule twelve dash one for same day advancement from second to third reader. So we're going to come back to it. And now on the City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero three two.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero three two Salary Director of Public Works. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Mr. President, point of order?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, we've, we've moved on the agenda from bills on second reader to third reader, correct?
Um, I, I think that what we just did was we properly did the same day advancement.
Yeah, so we did, we did the, I apologize, Mr. President. So we did, we voted on second reader, then we voted on the motion to move to third reader.
Correct.
Now we're in the third reader portion of the agenda.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. President. I apologize, Ms. Thompson.
Councilmember McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
For the record, City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero three two has been approved on third reader. On to the next bills, we will go to twenty one dash zero 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 three.
Twenty one dash zero 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 three Baltimore City Work Group on Nuisance Parking and Auto Businesses. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved on the twenty one dash zero 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 eight.
Twenty one dash zero 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 eight.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I see Chairman Schleifer with his hand raised. Yes, Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I noticed that, and it was brought to my attention through rec and parks, that the bill naming was amended in committee, and the current, the correct name is not listed here. So I just wanted to make sure the record reflected that the name of this playground will be the Rochelle Ricky Specter Playground, not the Ricky Specter Playground.
Good. So put Rochelle in front of Ricky Specter. Since this is on third reader, let's make sure we do it completely right. So to the clerk, if we could go back and reread the bill back in and then take the vote again to ensure that the record reflects it.
Point of order, Mr. President.
One second. So we're going to reread the bill as Rochelle Ricky Specter. Yes, Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having amended the title of bills myself before and encountered this same concern, I just, procedurally, I think that the title is proper as it is listed in the agenda and is supposed to be read as such.
No, there wasn't amendment to appropriately amend this title. It's important for us to read the title as the way the bill was appropriately amended. So we're going to go back and read the bill as it was appropriately amended. I think it was for, you know, a real reason as to why they wanted to add in her formal first name. Hopefully, the former councilwoman is on, and as well as her family in California or wherever is on. Thank you to the Chair for catching this. So we're going to go back, we're going to reread in twenty one dash zero 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 eight and put Rochelle in front of Ricky Specter Playground. Clerk, the floor is yours.
Twenty one dash zero 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 eight City Properties naming the playground in Northwest Park located at twenty twenty one West Rogers Avenue to be the Rochelle Ricky Specter Playground. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you again to Chairman Schleifer for catching that. This bill, Bill number twenty one dash zero 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 eight is now approved on to twenty one dash zero zero one four.
Twenty one dash zero zero one four Baltimore City Fire Department Reporting Requirements. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now on to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcement. First up, we will hear from our Vice President, Economic and Community Development Chair, Chairwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I have about five announcements for dates in April. So committee, please listen up. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hear City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero four zero on April sixth, twenty twenty one at two P M. And that was the Flood Plane Management Code Bill. And that was put in by the President on behalf of the administration. And, and so the next bill is Bill number twenty one dash zero zero two seven, and that's going to be heard on April thirteenth, twenty twenty one at two P M. And that was the RPP area for Federal Hill, the exemption for one East Montgomery Street. And the sponsor of that bill was Councilman Costello of the eleventh district. It was introduced on January twenty fifth. The third bill, number twenty one dash zero zero two six, will also be heard on April thirteenth at two fifteen P M. And that was the rezoning of twelve oh one South Caton Avenue. That was introduced by Councilwoman Porter on January twenty fifth. The fourth announcement also on April thirteenth, twenty twenty one at two ten P M. Bill number twenty one zero zero two five. And that was a rezoning of twenty two hundred, twenty two oh five, twenty two twenty, twenty three, ten, two three three oh, twenty four hundred and twenty five hundred of Brony Highway. Block six nine one six lot oh one five. And the last hearing will be Bill number twenty one dash zero zero three one, and that will be heard on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one at two P M. And that's the, the landlord tenant lease renewals. I think it's the last of that package. And the sponsor of this bill was Councilman Glover of the thirteenth district, which was also, the bill was also introduced on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next, we'll hear from Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule ten two to announce a hearing for Council Resolution twenty one dash zero zero twenty two R.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the request of Councilman Dorsey from the third district, Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on March thirteenth at ten A M. for assisting Baltimore City artists.
Okay. Is that it?
Oh, so yes, the Senate move for the ten two, yes.
So are there any other, any other announcements, Chairman?
No, that's it. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no, no new hearing announcements.
Well, thank you, Chairwoman McCray. Next up, we have Public Safety and Government Operations Chairman Stokes. I mean, sorry, Chairman Conway. You guys starting to look electing me. Chairman Conway?
Sorry, I had crying children in the background. Such is the nature.
I'm like, did I?
I don't know if you can still hear them. They, they, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend rules ten dash two, ten dash three.
Without objections, to suspend the rules, they will be suspended. Hearing and seeing no objection, the rules are suspended. Ten dash two and ten dash three.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill twenty one dash zero zero four four on Wednesday, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one at one oh two P M. virtually. And the Baltimore, the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill LO twenty one dash zero 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 six on Wednesday, March thirty first, twenty twenty one at one P M. virtually. And, oh, excuse me, the, the first one is on retirement board composition. And the second one, LO twenty one dash zero 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 six, is the Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we have Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hear Bill number EA twenty Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hear Bill number EA twenty-one dash zero zero three zero on Thursday, March eleventh, and that is for the nomination of Christopher J. Shorter for City Administrator, Chief Administrative Officer. Thank you.
No, thank you. Last but certainly not least, Chairman for Ways and Means, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Committee, Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, April sixth at ten A.M. This is a virtual WebEx meeting on Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero two nine Commercial Parking Facilities Annual License Fee. Also, Mr. President, the Bionicle Audits Oversight Commission will hold the hearing on Wednesday, March twenty-fourth at five P.M. This is a virtual WebEx meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman. At this point, we'll move into regular announcements. Are there any members who would like to have a regular announcement? Please raise your hand. We to be called on. I see Vice President Sharon Middleton.
I'd just like to add, in fact, a member of my family I just heard yesterday was stricken with a COVID death. And his name is Charles Poole Jr., so I want to add them to the moment of silence list. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I seen, saw Councilwoman Ramos's hand. Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. I wanted to follow up on what Chairwoman McCray had talked about in terms of International Women's Day today. The theme for International Women's Day today is choose to challenge. And that means a lot. That means that we need to choose to challenge ourselves in terms of thinking differently about what we're doing and who we are if we need to. That also means challenging each other and also challenging and lifting up each other. And I just wanted to point out the theme for this important day and celebrate the women here in the council, as well as women all over the city and our state. Thank you.
No, thank you. So I see the fission in the air again. Are there any other announcements, general announcements? Hearing and seeing none, to Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one at five P.M. And may we have a moment of silence for the Charles Poole Jr. family and also the forty-nine victims of homicides and the eight hundred and five year-to-date Baltimoreans that have died from COVID since the pandemic started, and then also our continued opioid epidemic. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Please bow our heads as a sign of a moment of silence for the victims and the members that we've lost that the Vice President just need. Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the sixth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. Love you, Baltimore.